At this time, I'm going to call upon everyone so we can stand and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd ask that you all remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of our soldiers, past and present.
Thank you. At this time, I'm also going to call upon everyone to either mute or issue phones so that they wouldn't ring and disturb our meeting this evening. And I've just done the same. I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded by Dartmouth Community Television and that our next regular scheduled meeting for the Board of Appeals is Wednesday, September 11th of this year on, at 6 o'clock PM here in this building. Moving on to the public hearings portion of tonight's meeting, the first matter that we have, which is a continued case, is ZAV 24-13. The representative is and petitioner is Zenith Landscape, excuse me, Zenith Land Surveyors LLC. Owner, Baker's Brook Holdings LLC. The subject property is for Baker's Brook Road, also known as MAP 29 Lot 20. It's located in the single residence B district. We've already previously opened up the hearing on this case. For our viewers at home, the petitioner is seeking a variance proposing to transfer ownership of part of the backfield parcel C and part of the frontage to a butter parcel A located in the single residence B district. They're seeking relief from Article 8, Section 375-8.4A1 Lot Area, Article 8, Section 375-8.4C1 Frontage, and also Article 8, Section 375-8.41B Lot Shape, and Article 8, Section 375-8.4B1 Setback. So, well, just by way of background, gentlemen, this is a case that came before us. This is one in which they're seeking to convey a portion of the property. The petitioner, there is common, there is common owners per se, but it's two separate. One is owned by an entity, the other one's owned by Mr. Savistano and his wife. And they, one of the things I think we had requested was that they redraft and show some additional frontage on one of the parcels, being parcel C. Are you following that, gentlemen?
Yep.
Okay. I've seen the plan. I've only seen a larger version of it today and, actually, no, yesterday. And it appears at this point that there's over, slightly over 69 feet. Might be a little bit more than that because there's a radius that's included. So they, they've changed the frontage on Lot C and pretty much left everything the same with regard to the transfer of the, or the conveyance of the proposed parcels to reconfigure the two lots. So unless there's any questions of the petitioner, I'm just going to ask if there's anybody out in the audience who has any questions because it is still a public hearing.
Yep.
Is there anything specific that you guys want to ask?
Nothing.
No, no, I have nothing based on what-
Doctor? All right, so given that this is a public meeting, I'm going to call upon anyone in the audience who would like to speak, who either would like to make a comment either in favor or in opposition to this petition. And this is the property known as Four Baker's Brook Road. I can report that there are probably about 15 people in the audience and it doesn't appear to be anyone who would like to come forth, either in opposition or in favor. All right, so we've, we've done this before. Typically, what I do is I just leave the public hearing portion of it open in case we need to extract any additional information from the petitioner. But I do have some proposed findings for the board to review to see whether or not it's something we're willing to consider.
There you go.
So, gentlemen, interrupt me anytime in case there's anything that you'd like to add. These are some of the proposed findings. The subject property is located at Four Baker's Brook Road and is identified as MAP 29 Lot 20 on the assessor's map. Lot 20 is located in the single residence B district and measures approximately 101,022 square feet and it contains 2.32 acres. Baker's Brook Holdings LLC, Anthony C. Savistano, its manager, has owned the property since 2024. And a budding parcel is located at Eight Baker's Brook Road and is identified as MAP 29 Lot 21 on the assessor's map. Lot 20 has been owned by Anthony C. Savistano and Pamela J. Brown since 1992. Lot 21 is located in the single residence B district and measures approximately 51,052 square feet, which is 1.17 acres. It is currently non-conforming as to lot size. The petitioner is seeking a variance to convey two portions of Lot 20 from the parcel to be transferred to Anthony C. Savistano and Pamela J. Brown to be merged into Lot 21. This would result in a non-conforming lot with a total size of 46,555 square feet, 1.06 acres. 83.25 feet of frontage and a setback from the existing garage of nine feet five inches. There is also a pre-existing non-conforming driveway that has, at its narrowest, a constriction of 24.2 feet. The driveway is not being changed. This would also result in Lot 21 being conforming as to lot size and will measure approximately 105,517 square feet, 2.422 acres. Prior to the grant of this variance between Lot 20 and Lot 21, as to lot size, there is one conforming lot and one non-conforming lot. After the grant of this variance, as to lot size, there will be one non, there will be one conforming lot and one non-conforming lot with just a conformity switching from one lot to the other. No new buildable lot is being created. The minimum lot size requirement in a single residence B district is 80,000 square feet. The minimum frontage requirement in a single residence B district is 200 feet. The minimum constriction of a lot in the single residence B district is 50 feet. And the minimum side setback requirement in the single residence B district is 20 feet. The requested variance meets the statutory requirements for granting a variance pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 10. It is the unanimous decision of the Board of Appeals to grant the requested variance to remove two portions of Lot, of MAP 29 Lot 22, Lot 20, being parcel A and B, as shown on title of new plan, to be transferred to the owners of a budding parcel 29 Lot 21, resulting in newly created non-conforming Lot 20 having a total lot size of 46,555 square feet, 1.068 acres, 83.25 feet of frontage, a setback from the existing garage of 9.5 inches, excuse me, nine feet five inches, and a constriction of 24 feet two inches, I should put here for the driveway area. All right. There are circumstances related to soil, shape, and topography that especially affect the subject property that do not generally affect the zoning district in which the structure of land is located. As reasoning, we've got the lot created for, for Baker's Brook Road is quite irregularly shaped and substantial wetlands exist on the relevant parcels. Second prong, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial otherwise, to the petitioner. Reasoning would be large portions of Lot 21 are unusable due to wetlands and the shape of Lot 20 creates significant privacy issues. Third prong, desirable relief may be granted without detriment to the public good. Granting the requested relief would not create any detriment to the public good. Literally, nothing will change except for the swap of ownership of part of the backfield and the front portion of the property. Prong four, the variance would not nullify or substantially derogate from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. The purposes of single residence B district will not be impacted as density will not change and there will be no changes to the use of roads. In addition, the on-site sewage septic system is an upgraded existing system which has just passed inspection and the water supply needs will not change. And the variance does not create an additional lot or additional development upon the property, which is the most important part of this. The board's approval will be conditioned upon, one, the petitioner or any subsequent owner will not, will transfer ownership of parcel A and B to the owners of parcel 29 Lot 21 to be merged into Lot 21. So we're going to keep it always as one lot. And the board approved reference plans. Obviously, we're going to approve the plan that's been presented to us. All right, so having read this, are there any questions, any additional comments?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
I have none, Mr. Chair.
All right. Mr. Shuba?
I have none.
All right, so I know you weren't present for this last hearing on this matter. So I'm, you know, I had concerns about this and I had voiced that. However, it appears that members of the board are understanding that this would, would satisfy the requirements. I don't know how this is going to, you know, going to serve as precedent for future matters, but I, I think that there is going to be, you know, possibly other people may concern, could be considering doing something like this. So obviously, we are going to have to grant a similar consideration. Having said all of that, in there being no concerns, I guess that we probably should close the public hearing and I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we close the public hearing on variance request ZAV 24-13.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the ayes have it. So we've closed the public hearing. If there are no other questions or other concerns about the findings?
I just, I, when you make reference, I mean, I don't have a problem with the findings. What I have is, the issue is parcel 29 Lot 21, is that also Lot C?
29, 21. The petitioner and/or any subsequent owner will transfer ownership of parcels A and B. A and B are not C and it says here to the owners of parcel 29 Lot 29 to be merged with 21. Yes, it's 29-21, it says it on the plan. You look here.
Where'd I miss it?
I'm right here.
Oh, 29, 21.
So it's MAP 29 Lot 21 and-
The petitioner or subsequent owner-
They'll be merged.
-transfer parcels A and B to the owner of, to be merged into Lot 21. Okay.
Just so you understand, right, right now, the property is just this.
Right, so these are going to merge with this and this will be a separate lot.
This, yes.
But did we want some kind of a condition with parcel C? When were you last here?
What would the condition be?
I don't remember.
I have the notes.
The condition that you would ask for was that we specifically state that A and B will be merged into Lot 21, so I added that condition.
Okay.
That's the condition you asked for.
All right, that's, all right, that was the condition, okay.
That was the condition, that's what we added.
Okay.
And it is specifically the condition.
Then I'm all set.
We had it to merge so that it would never be treated as a separate lot. So right now, there's going to be one larger parcel and one slightly smaller parcel.
Right, okay.
But I'm just going to make things clear for our viewers at home. There are two homes that are already on these properties, on these respective lots. All we did is made one conforming that was previously non-conforming and one that was conforming will now result in non-conformity. However, from a practical standpoint on where the buildings and the structures are situated, it actually, I think it makes much more sense for it to be carved out in this manner.
Okay, I have no problem with that.
All right. All righty, so I'll entertain a motion, gentlemen.
I make a motion that we approve variance ZAV-24-13 with the stated facts and conditions.
Second to have motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Congratulations. Good luck. Moving on. The second matter we have is also a continued case and it's a case in which I have a conflict. And this was previously heard and I believe Mr. Shuba served as the acting chairman for this hearing. So we're going to go off the record just for a couple of minutes so that we can-
The zoning board of appeals is back in session. As Attorney Maderis indicated, I'm the vice chair and I chaired this meeting at the last time we opened the meeting and he has a conflict with this case, so he accused himself. This is special permit, ZSP 24-7, and this, this is continued. The petitioner applicant is SNN, SNN Almeda Property LLC and the subject property is located at 1402 Tucker Road, MAP 167 Lot 95. It's located in the general business district in the Aquifer III overlay district. This case was legally advertised on June 6th in 2024 and June 13, 2024. We opened the reading, the, the hearing and we read the, into the records all the comments from the different departments. At that time, I believe the, the petitioner is here for a special permit to extend or expand an existing non-conforming use. It's an existing building, it's an existing barn that he would like to convert into a office slash gym and expand the parking lot that resulted in the expansion of the impervious surfaces, which is over the 10% allowed in the, in the Aquifer. But the lot is already over and I believe it's around 30%. So it's a special permit to expand an existing non-conforming use. At the time of the last hearing, there were some concerns from the Board of Health and we had a lengthy comment letter that was sent to us and I believe I read it into the record at that time. And the concern was the expansion of the impervious surfaces and the impact of the runoff to the Slocom River. And at that time, we asked the petitioner to, to go back and address those comments, work with the Board of Health and maybe get in contact with DPW or engineering and see what he can do to address those concerns. And I believe he did address the concerns and he, there was a letter that was sent to the director, to the Director of Public Health. And I can read it, I can read that letter into the record. And then there was another response from the Director of Health that came to us yesterday. It was dated August 20th. But, so the, the petitioner did address the concerns and he sent a memo with computations regarding the stormwater system to the Board of Health. And it says, this is from Jamie Bissonnet. Is, and I apologize, that's you, Jamie?
That's not me, he works in my office.
Oh, he works in your office, okay. And, and it was sent to Mr. Michaud, who is the Director of the Board of Health. And it says, "Due to concerns about the quality of stormwater from the proposed development at 1402 Tucker Road, a nitrogen loading calculation has been performed for the existing and proposed site conditions. The attached calculation is taken from the Bourne Conservation Commission. It accounts for nitrogen from septic flow and stormwater runoff from roof, pavement, and fertilized lawn area to create average nitrogen loading concentrations. In this case, there is no septic flow at the site, at the site. The site is serviced by town sewer. The roof, pavement, and lawn areas shown in these calculations are limited to the coverage on the subject lot rather than the total drainage area, which includes area from abutting lots. The lawn areas are limited to manicured lawn areas and do not include existing mulch beds, the brush wooded area at the rear of the lot, or the sand bottom area of the proposed infiltration basin." So basically what he did, he analyzed his site, which, which is appropriate because the modifications are being done at the site, not offsite. The Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook states that "Infiltration basin as proposed removes 50 to 60% of total nitrogen from the contributing runoff. Our nitrogen loading calculations for the proposed development uses a 50% removal efficiency. This way, this was done by removing 50% of the areas, roof, pavement, and lawn, which contribute runoff directly to the proposed infiltration basin. The calculations show that the nitrogen loading concentration is 1.84 ppm in the existing state and is reduced to 1.76 ppm in the proposed state. Additionally, according to the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook, the proposed infiltration basin will remove 80% of the total suspended solids, 60 to 70% of total phosphorus, 85 to 90% of metals, copper, lead, zinc, calcium, and 90% of pathogens, coliform, and E. coli. With the total volume runoff of the site is increased by the proposed improvements due to the proposed stormwater controls, there will be no offsite runoff. The 100% year storm is fully contained and recharged on-site and treatment levels will meet or exceed the existing site conditions. For these reasons, we believe the proposed development will not negatively impact the groundwater within the Aquifer Protection District. Sincerely, Zenith Consulting Engineer LLC, signed by Jamie Bissonnet, professional engineer, manager, senior engineer." So basically, they analyzed the site and they addressed the concerns based on the proposed modifications on-site. That means the increase of, of the impervious areas and that are containing the storms, the runoff that is, that is generated on-site from the 100-year storm, which is, that's the maximum that we, we designed for, is a 100-year storm. So basically, they, there'll be no runoff from the site offsite. They containing all the runoff on-site with a 100-year storm. And also, they, they meet all the requirements for, for pollutants removal as, with the DEP guidelines. Now, the, the response from Mr. Michaud, because Mr. Michaud is the Board of Health Director and I believe he doesn't have maybe the engineering background. So his response was, "Dear Mr. Maderis and members of the board, on June 5, 2024, a comment letter was provided from the Dartmouth Board, was provided from the Dartmouth Board of Health to the Town of Dartmouth Board of Appeals in response to special permit ZSP 24-7 for property located at 1402 Tucker Road." And this is the one I, I believe I read at the last meeting. "The comments were focused upon the proposed increase in impervious lot coverage that is regulated by the Town of Dartmouth Aquifer Protection zoning bylaws. While the aforementioned bylaws provide for relief through the special permit process, a reminder to the town is necessary since these bylaws are essential to the protection of our public water supply. In addition to the protection of our public water supply, the restrictions also provide positive unintended consequences to the environment, namely, the downstream Slocom River. Since that time, the applicant's engineer has provided me with pollutant reduction performance calculations of the proposed drainage system. These calculations demonstrate a reduction in the, in the priority pollutant of concerns in the letter, nitrogen and pathogens. The reductions are measured against the existing state which offers no surface stormwater management. That being said, the applicant's engineer has addressed the concerns raised by this office in the July 5, 2024 letter with the proposed drainage system that offers improved treatment of stormwater from the existing and proposed impervious areas over the present state. However, please note that my review of the performance is cursory and not comprehensive. The Board of Appeal may want to run this, the presentation by a consultant to verify the final performance reported. Please feel free to reach out with any questions. Thank you, Christopher Michaud, Director of Public Health." So this is where we're, we're at. We asked the consultant to work with the, with the Board of Health on addressing the, the, the concerns from the increase of impervious surfaces. And I believe if I go back to the original applications, the, the existing conditions that I have here shows a lot coverage of 30.9% and the applicant is asking for an increase of 243.2. So he's, he's increasing by almost 13 or 12-point-something percent. That's the increase. With the, with the increase, I think he's offset that increase by providing a stormwater system that's going to collect and treat all the runoff from site. And I believe, as an engineer, I don't, I mean, I read a lengthy memo with so many technical probably terms and I'm pretty familiar with this design, we do it all the time. And I, I feel confident that the system will address the concerns. However, I apologize, I got this memo yesterday, basically, and I was trying to look at the plans. For some reason, the plans that we have off the server, I tried to plot, they came up as one block, solid block. I couldn't read anything on the, on, on the plans. So now I have another sets, will, I do have besides, I'm sure other, the board members might have some questions or concerns, but we'll open that for the board members and then I have some concerns or some questions, not concerns, that, that might be technical that I would like to get answers for.
Sure.
And then, this is a public hearing. We'll, we'll also ask if anyone in the audience here that has any concern that he would like to state to the board. At this time, do I have any questions from the board members?
I have nothing at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Do you have a plan of the infiltration system that you gave or presented to the Board of Health? I am using the wrong term. What did you present to Christopher Michaud regarding all the numbers that are on this letter?
Yeah, so there is a calculation that I believe was attached to that letter. You can see it.
Then I understand that. Where'd the calculation come from?
So it's from, it's taken from the Bourne Conservation Commission.
I don't know what that means.
So it's a standard document that they've used for decades now. And it takes into account, they, they use it for septic systems primarily, that's the primary source of nitrogen. But they also take into account the runoff on the site if you're doing an addition or a new home on a lot. So it's kind of comprehensive to the full development on a lot. And what it does is it looks at the nitrogen loading for the current state, however you put those numbers in, and then the proposed state. And it spits out your, your average concentration of nitrogen.
Well, the calculations presented to us have nothing to do with the lot that you are here for. Is that correct?
It is. We've used the numbers from our lot specifically in the calculation.
Explain to me, explain to me how you do that.
So we take the, the roof, the pavement, and the manicured lawn areas and input those numbers into the calculation.
Okay.
For existing and proposed conditions.
And where does the runoff now go? So that your, your, the letter says it's not going to go anywhere off the property. Where's it going?
So right now, there's, it might be easier on the existing additions plan. Right now, the parking area is here, it's an L. There are two catch basins here and here that come with a main hole and into a subsurface drain field. And then there's a portion of the lot, kind of on the, along the exterior, the existing barn, the rear wooded area, and some area from the abutters also comes into the lot. That just goes into a low point right now in that wooded area. And it kind of just pawns up and then dissipates.
There is a basin there now?
It's a natural low point. It's not constructed.
So what you're proposing is going to construct a new basin?
Correct.
Okay. And is that shown on that plan?
Yes.
What, what page are we looking at?
It is the grading and drainage plan. It's titled sheet-
I'm sorry to interrupt, for the record, you need to introduce yourself so you can get the memo.
I'm Morris with Zenith Consulting Engineers.
Grading and-
Okay.
So it's two sheets after the existing, if that helps?
Yeah.
Feet in the set.
Number four, sheet number four? Did it say sheet number four?
They don't have page numbers on them, but it's the fourth sheet.
Oh, L, they have letters, so which- They have letters, so which?
Sheet G.
G, okay. Is that the grading and drainage?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I got that.
So Attorney Human, there is an existing, because if you recall, there was a special, this, there was a special permit issued for this site a long time ago.
Two of them.
Two of them. And for some reason, they're not in compliance with that. We, you know, there's an existing system on-site. I'm not sure if it's functioning or to what extent, you know, but he's proposing to remove that system, and he's going to build a brand-new system on-site.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. And so he's collecting all the runoff to, so it's going to be a combination of an open pond infiltration, you know, with the infiltration system. And it's going to be a brand-new system. Again, when we go back, I think I said I had some comments on this because I like to see some kind of maintenance program or maintenance plan that will be part of the drainage. Because when we issue this special permit, this is going to be recorded at the registry of deed, and we want that plan to go with it because we understand you can design the best system, and if you don't maintain it right, it's not going to function to your expectations.
And just to speak to that, we do have an operation and maintenance plan.
I didn't see it, yeah, but.
Drainage report, and that was part of the submission.
Okay. Was that part of the special permit submission too?
Yes.
Okay. I'm not sure at this time who's looking at it. Is Engineering, DPW looking at the drainage? Or nobody's looking at the stormwater, I think? Because I made a suggestion last time that you get in touch with Paul Dewatt at Engineering or something, but.
Right, he did comment through the portal.
Oh, he did?
Yeah. Saying that, and we were actually quite surprised that he had no comments because he usually has quite a few.
I understand.
But he actually said that he thought the project seemed good. He was, from an engineering standpoint.
Okay. Yeah. Attorney Human.
It was before the last meeting.
Before the last meeting?
Yeah.
Not recently?
No. And the plan has not changed. We didn't make any revision to the plan from the previous meeting.
I guess my concern was there were two prior hearings involving this piece of property. One of them back in 2004, and the second one, again, asking for special permits. And each one of them has a specific paragraph in there that says the existing barn shall not be used for office space or any other principal business or any residential use. And I can't figure out why that language was put in there, but it's put in every single decision by the, by the, this prior, by prior decision by this board over, you know, like February 2004 and November 2005. They didn't want, for some reason, they only wanted the barn used for storage. And I don't know why.
Hi, Mike McVeigh from Markey Walsh, New Bedford. I saw that. And just so we're clear, and I'm sure you know this, Attorney Human, these owners here are not the owners that went before in 2004 and then 2005, and then subsequently went above the lot area requirement.
Excuse me, Attorney McVeigh. I'm not sure. I was looking at something else. Did you introduce yourself?
I did.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry. No, but I think, just to speak to that, I read through these things a few times. We couldn't find the minutes. My, look, putting, no, I haven't. Putting eyes on the barn itself, my best guess is twenty years ago, they thought it was unsafe to maybe, because it's not, it's not safe now for any use. Part of the reason the applicants are here tonight.
I thought it had something to do with adding more parking spaces and having more coverage on the property.
It could be.
Because your coverage is going to go up, what, twelve percent?
If we go back to the coverage, I don't mean to interrupt, but because this was, I think there was a comment from DPW. There was a comment, should be on the server, on the porter, regarding the existing and proposed lot coverage calculations. It seems like Mr. Dewatt is not in agreement with your numbers.
You may be referring to the comment from Mr. Barber?
Well, yeah, I think it comes from, yeah, Mr., I believe, yeah.
So I think a couple of the letters that we read into the record last time had conflicting numbers on the coverages, existing and proposed.
Yeah.
And what the confusion is, is we had a previous version of this plan that we submitted on the portal. Both versions were submitted before the last meeting, but the previous version had different coverages on it because we did not do the calculation as is regulated in the bylaw.
Okay. So this set that I'm looking at here says last revision date 4/25/24.
Yes.
For the, this reflects the, the exist thirty point nine percent existing and the forty-three point two proposed?
Right.
Okay.
And the previous plan, I have the numbers here. We had thirty-five point nine for existing and forty-eight point four for proposed.
And did you upload this on the server too, after?
Yes.
And Mr. Dewatt had no comments on this one? He agrees with the calculations or no?
I believe so.
Okay.
I think the issue was that he was referring to the old plan, the coverages on the old plan as opposed to the new one.
Okay. So the increase would be twelve point three percent. That's what the increase, if we are in agreement that these numbers.
What's the plan for the barn?
So the barn's going to be rehabbed, which is going to be quite extensive procedure. It's not in good shape. And it's going to become offices and a yoga studio.
And the impervious cover that we are, what you're talking about right now, it's going to go to forty-three point two. Does that include new parking spaces?
Yeah. That includes everything on the lot, existing and proposed.
Through any impervious, concrete.
Right. I mean, I like the idea that based on these numbers, whatever's coming off the roof or whatever is going to be treated, to the point where nothing bad is going to happen to the water supply, so.
Yeah, and I think the real reason that decrease is happening, and this was part of the discussion with Chris from Board of Health, the subsurface drainage does not get credit for the nitrogen removal. And it's, I'm not entirely clear on the reason why, but the state dictates that, and it's similar to a septic system where it's underground, you're putting it directly into the soil. So you're not getting that treatment as it passes through. But with the open basin, it's been proven and it's documented in the state regulations that you do get that removal. So proposing that open basin that we are is what gets us additional removal and gets us below the existing state.
For those of us who are not savvy, what does that look like when it's finished?
So it's essentially a hole in the ground. It's got, it's not vertical walls or anything. It's only.
Couple of feet, was it?
Yeah. On the shortest side here, it's only two feet deep. Parking lot, it's four feet deep.
On a rainy day, it will be a pond?
Yeah, it'll have a foot or so. I mean, in the two-year storm, which is typically a very heavy storm, what you would think of, there's probably going to be a foot of water in it. And that's going to drain relatively quickly and certainly less than three days.
I don't think you're going to get much. A hundred-year storm is almost that two feet, right?
Right. A hundred-year storm should be about two feet of water.
I think, yeah. I don't know. Okay. I have no more.
No, I'm good. I've heard everything that was said, and I agree.
Yeah. Yeah, I like, I like the concept. Just unfortunately, I didn't have time yesterday to look at the plans. I wasn't, I wasn't able to look at the drainage, actually, because I didn't know, it was all one block. So basically, if you walk me through just a bit here with the drainage system. So we're collecting the runoff from the east side parking lot by a catch basin?
Yep, down at the end, there's one catch basin.
Right, so.
All the new impervious is going to that catch basin, which goes to a sediment for that.
Catch basin, does it have like a deep sump or an oil-water separator?
Deep sump with a hood on the outlet.
Okay.
So no trash or oils are going to go in, and then the sump will pull out total suspended solids.
Because, and on the west side, you're collecting runoff going to the, the roof runoff is going directly to the infiltration system, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And the pavement from the parking lot?
That, so the existing catch basins here are storm scepter hydrodynamic separators?
Yeah. Okay. And that's connected to the infiltration?
Yes.
Okay. So you're getting some treatment before?
Right.
Okay.
We're keeping those storm scepters.
What are these lines?
Those are the infiltrators, the plastic.
Chambers.
Chambers that are put underground with stones so water will infiltrate. Yeah, that was my concern because I didn't see it. I thought it was untreated going into the infiltration system. So you have the parking lot going to a storm scepter, then it's going to the infiltration, then an overflow into the retention.
Right, there's kind of an equalization between the underground and open basin.
And the roof runoff, obviously, you don't need to treat it. It's going directly to the.
Correct. Yeah, directly to the underground.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine. I, the other concern I had, I didn't see any maintenance. So if you can put the maintenance plan on the, unless we need to record it, because if we do approve this, I like to have the maintenance plan as part of the, because now it's on the deed. If they sell the property someone else, they need to, I mean, this is standard practice. I'm sure you know with conservation or site plan or planning board or whoever they do, you know.
Right, we can put it in the city, right?
Yes, so it's not something out of the ordinary, you know, so.
Right. So you want that on the plan instead of in the drainage?
I want some kind of schedule on the plan, like for the BMPs and the catch basins and the pond, like on the yearly maintenance, you know, usually we require that.
Yeah.
And I think, because you're on the Aquifer, I'm not sure now if the way, and this was subject to a special permit before. And right in the decision, it says that you have to do a yearly inspection and submit a report to the zoning officer, a yearly report, saying, and he's never seen anything in twenty years or fifteen years. You know, this is one of the concerns that we have.
Right, and that's part of what we were saying, that the owner now was not the owner at the time.
I understand, but you know, we're trying to protect the Aquifer. It doesn't, you know, we're not here, who's the owner or who's the next owner? But this is a, if this is on the deed, now we have control of, you know, whoever the next owner is, or whatever, you know. So that's one thing I had questioned. And then I need to, the language was very vague concerning what you're asking for in terms, there was some language about the two-foot separation from the groundwater, but I think you meet that.
We do meet that.
So you don't need a special permit for that?
No.
Well, it was in the language of the petition, that's why. So the only special permit that you're asking is the increase from the thirty point nine, is it?
Yep.
To the forty-three point two, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
The extent of the matter is we would have to, I guess, negate or amend the previous special permit, which prevented the barn from any uses.
Right.
Okay.
But there's no, technically, because there was something about the two-foot separation between the bottom of the infiltration system and, but I'm looking at your plans here. I think you do have the two-feet separation.
We do. I know, I don't remember that being part of our write-up in the, but I do know we talked about that at the last meeting.
Okay. Because I believe, yeah, I wasn't sure at the last meeting if you had. This, these plans did not change from the last meeting.
No, and so the soil logs were something we thought was missing from the plan. They are on there.
Oh, so they weren't on the plans last time?
They were.
Oh, they were?
And for whatever reason, I just missed them as I was flipping through.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, okay.
So that does show the soil profiles, the water table.
Right, yeah, I looked at that. So you don't need, yeah, so basically, the expansion of the existing non-conforming from thirty point nine to the forty-three point two. And.
The ability to use the barn.
I mean, it's, the structure is there. I think I like to see, to see, but to use rather than keep it there deteriorating and, you know, so. I mean, I don't have an issue with that use. And the use, the yoga and the office is not an intense use to the Aquifer. You know, if there was something that had to do with some hazardous material or some heavy traffic going, you know, or petroleum products or something, yeah. But I mean, for an office and yoga use, I think, you know, it's appropriate. But so unfortunately, we're not going to vote on this tonight because I don't have a draft decision because I had some questions about the system. I wasn't sure how it's functioning. And I don't think, I personally don't think we need to get a consultant involved here because I'm pretty familiar with this.
No, I don't either.
If you agree with me.
I would think that we want to include some of the conditions that appear on the previous orders in the new order. And if council would like to prepare a draft decision, that would be great.
Absolutely.
Also, I just should note that the applicants entered into a three-year contract for inspections. So that's, but we.
Yeah. Well, that's good because we want to see, I think, if you don't mind, if you can send the O and R or the, you know, to the, to Michelle just so I can either, we can make it, we can make the maintenance plan part of this package or if it's easier just to take the maintenance, you know, schedule, put it on the plan and, you know, it's, if it's sixty thousand pages.
It's quite a bit just because the storm scepters have kind of a package.
Yeah, and I understand. That's why I said, you know, just make it like very simple. The storm scepter needs to be.
It's almost like an appendix to the stormwater, stormwater management report. So we could take that out, and it could be a separate document to be filed along with it.
Yeah.
Chair, if I may, along with your recommendation that there be a maintenance plan adhered to every year or whatever you determine, should that be also marked in the record as in perpetuity?
Oh, yeah.
So it never runs out, it's got to go over and over?
It is, it is, yeah.
Okay.
And that's why it goes with the deed. It'd be part of the deed and recorded at the registry.
All right.
So.
It's a continued condition of the special permit.
Absolutely. I think that that's all I have.
I don't have any.
I don't know if any of the other members, that was the only concern. And unfortunately, I said, you know, we got this yesterday, and I wasn't able to look at this. But if council be kind enough to send a draft decision, and then we can tweak it to what we need or add other things, you know. But so. What's, the next meeting is the 11th? How many cases we have? I mean, this is not going to take long.
They're all contained cases after, so we'll just put them on the list.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So this way, you know, we want you to move ahead.
September 11th.
September 11th, yeah.
We'll make it work, of course.
Yeah. No, we don't want you, we want you to move through, so. We like to help people. September 11th. So I need a motion to continue this. Oh, yeah, public hearing. Thank you, yeah. Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm getting rusty. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who's here for this case that would like to voice their opinion, either in support or in opposition of this case? Seeing none, I guess we have no comments. We all entertain a motion to continue this hearing. this hearing to September 11th.
Do we need anything signed off on, Michelle?
I don't think so, but I'll.
Alright. I make a motion that we continue, uh, the hearing on, uh, special permit Z S P dash 24 dash 7 to September 11th, 2024.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, see you on September 11th.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you. The next meeting, I think we will, uh, switch seats and, uh, we'll take a few minutes recess. Thank you.
Uh, moving on to the last matter that's on for tonight's hearing, it's a case of first impression here, special permit Z S P 24 dash 9, the representative petitioner is Rafael Zelik of Zelik Design LLC, the owner is Rocky Choi, subject property is located at 291 Flag Swamp Road, also known as MAP 79 Lot 34, it's located within the single residence A zoning district, and the matter was legally advertised on August 1st and August 8th of 2024.
I make a motion that we waive the reading of the abutters list.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it, if anyone would like to review the list of the abutters that were notified of this hearing, the list is available at the zoning board of appeals office on the second floor of the town hall. The petitioner in this case is seeking a special permit to tie into existing septic system and bring a water service to a detached structure under construction, they're seeking relief on the Article 8, Section 375 dash 8.3 B 1, 2, and special permit uses. We've got a letter from the building department, it's a denial letter, addressed to a Tomas Sadowski in Lincoln, Rhode Island, and it's regarding 291 Flag Swamp Road, indicates, I have reviewed your application and at this time, your proposal cannot be approved due to non-compliance with current zoning regulations. The applicant proposes to tie into existing septic system and bring a water service to a detached structure under construction which will require special permit from the zoning board of appeals. This is the second denial letter applied for, the first was issued on February 16th, 2024, which they did not act upon, currently there's an open permit on the structure, R B P 23 dash 620 for a one-story office, no bedrooms, no bath. Please note, the comments from the board of health, this property is subject to a grant of restrictive covenant, the grantee is the Dartmouth Board of Health, and the covenant prohibits the installation of plumbing to this outbuilding, the covenant would need to be rescinded by the Dartmouth Board of Health and would only be a consideration of the board of health upon demonstration of full compliance with 310 C M R 15.00, that has not happened, that has not happened. All that aside, other issues emerge within the scope of this project with the board of health and are as listed below. One, plan does not show a kitchenette and the total square footage of the library exceeds that have measured in the field, the size is noteworthy because a room of 70 square feet is more than contains, or, or more, that contains a window, electrical service and privacy constitutes a bedroom in accordance with Title V, therefore, the library and office as shown on the plan, both meet the requirements and when added to the four bedrooms in the existing home in exceedance of the design flow results, more bedrooms than allowed, no kitchenette shown on plan, but one is listed in this application's description, no waste piping scheme for connection of the structure to the existing septic system has been proposed by a designer, therefore, completion of this step is not endorsement, approval, or release by the board of health, ideally, the above matter should be resolved before any approvals of this application is considered. Your application is being denied under the following sections of the Dartmouth zoning bylaw, 375 dash 8.3 B, accessory buildings or structures with kitchen or bathroom facilities, accessory buildings or structures within which a kitchen, wet bar, bathroom, or any plumbing is installed such as, but not limited to, cabanas, garages, or studios, such an accessory use is allowed by special permit granted by the board of appeals if the following requirements are met. The board of appeals determines that the accessory building or structure will not be used as an additional residential unit on the property, the board of appeals shall determine through a review of submitted building plans that the nature of the proposed plumbing, wiring, or other utilities is not proposed in such a manner so that the building, accessory building or structure could be used or converted into another additional residential unit. If a special permit is granted, there can be an inspection once a year after notice of the owner to determine that the accessory building or structure has been converted into an additional residential unit, has not been converted into an additional residential unit. Conversion will result in the revocation of the special permit after a public hearing in accordance with Mass General Law Chapter 48, the subject property is located in the single residence B district. So that is the letter of the zoning, excuse me, of the zoning enforcement officer, our building inspector. Now I'm gonna read into the record some notes from town boards, first is the board of health, this property is subject to a grant of restrictive covenant, the grantee is the Dartmouth, this is the same language that I just read, gentlemen, from the building inspector. It says, I'll just finish off with the paragraph there, says, therefore, completion of this step is not endorsement, approval, or release by the board of health, ideally, the above matters should be resolved before any approvals of this application is considered, tend to agree, and it's from Christopher Mishad, conservation says, see recent D O A attachment, no conservation issues here at this time, and D P W says, the compliance with the following D P W regulations, which is, is their usual language, and the fire department, is there a site plan showing access to the building? Alright, so at this time, I'm gonna call upon the petitioner's representative to come forward and state their case.
Uh, good evening, my name is Rafael Zelik of Zelik Design, and, um, so, when, um, we originally spoke with the, uh, the building inspectors and we basically, uh, described the, the scope of work, um, it was presented to us, okay, here's a, um, a permit for the structure itself as an office building with, uh, electrical service, but it was always intended to, uh, down the line while the process is, is happening, to be able to make a connection to the existing septic. Um, the existing residential building is four bedrooms, um, this structure itself has a one office space, um, and the library itself, um, at the time, originally was more than 70 square feet, um, but we had a board of health review that actually came out to the property and they reviewed the, um, the existing structure and they counted all the bedrooms in the existing house, and they reviewed the, the proposed building that is already constructed, obviously we don't have, uh, the water and sewer connection to it, and, um, we've noted that, um, there was, um, the 71 square feet, so since then, we, as soon as after that board of health, um, it came by, um, we did the revision to that library to reduce the, uh, square footage of that space to 69.33, um, which was per board of health, um, review where they actually came out onto the site itself. Um, and, um, the other part, which is basically the design or the connection to the existing, um, septic system, it was also prepared and included in the packet as well, which is done by Farland Corp. Um, and the reason that the original denial, so we requested a denial letter, um, it took a lot longer for the engineer to prepare us a, um, a connection to existing system than the, allow 30 days for the denial to act on, so obviously, um, things have taken longer to get the proper documentation that was within the 30-day period, so then we had to submit a, a separate denial letter as well. So with the discussions with the building department and, uh, following, uh, mutual agreements, is that we would submit a, um, a, a petition to the zoning board of appeals for, to remove the covenant to be able to tie in, you know, based that we meet all the, uh, zoning requirements and we meet all the requirements of the board of health.
Hold on, let me just stop you.
Sure.
Um, according to the, according to the board of health agent, he says that the property is subject to a restrictive covenant, and the, the grantee of that restrictive covenant is not our board, it's the Dartmouth Board of Health, so if you're gonna be seeking any type of relief from that restrictive covenant, that covenant prohibits the installation of plumbing to this outbuilding, now I don't have a copy of that covenant, I don't know what, exactly what it says, so it would appear to me that if you're gonna be seeking release of the restrictive covenant, you gotta go see the board of health.
Right, which, this is where there's a little bit of confusion that I guess, because I, I mean, I've spoken with Chris a couple of times, and our understanding was that we wanted, we needed to, um, speak in front of Z B A first to clear up any kind of, uh, communication and, you know, present this to the, uh, board, to the Z B A first, and then, once we have clearance from the Z B A, then we discuss with the board of health. So I guess there's a little bit of miscommunication between the board of health and us, um, so like if, you know, when we spoke with the, the building department and the building inspectors, um, you know, the conversation was, yeah, the covenant was, um, added on to the property because they wanted to make sure that the board of health was, uh, going to have a, a say-so, so, um, we're trying to just follow the process that, as we are talking to, from one department to the other, to the other, so, um.
Well, I don't understand, I don't know whether miscommunication occurred, but I'll be honest with you, this is a three-member board, it requires three decisions.
Sure.
In order for it to pass, it requires an affirmative decision from each one of us, I'm not prepared to, to, to render a decision that would be favorable until this restrictive covenant is dealt with from, with the, with the board of health.
Okay.
And I'll be honest with you, we grant, we, these types of, this type of relief, I don't know, I, I can't recall one that we've not granted.
I understand.
I'm not saying we, we grant all of them, but I'm just saying, I don't recall one that we've not granted, we just wanna make sure that when we review plans, we always review plans that don't lead us to believe or that it could be, you could draw a reasonable conclusion that it's gonna be used as a single fam, uh, to be used as an occupied residence, as an additional residence. Now, the other thing I wanted to ask you about is, there's some photos here that have been presented to us about some plumbing fixtures and whatnot.
Um, it.
I have color ones here, if you could just, are, are you familiar with these?
Yes.
Alright, you provided these?
Well, we did, yes.
Okay, what did you want to depict in these to us?
So board of health requested to, so basically there was a, um, a garbage disposal in the existing residential building, um, there was a, a garbage disposal that was installed, so the board of health requested to remove it, so we basically, uh, showed pictures that the, um, garbage disposal have been disconnected.
Okay, so you're just trying to show some compliance?
Right, exactly, so there was a letter that was sent out.
What about the one, this one here, what are you trying to depict in this?
So there was a, um, a saltwater, um, Tom, do you wanna, uh, chairman? This is, um, uh, Tomas Sadowski, who, uh, from Getz L S E and, um.
Tom Sadowski, yes, this picture showed the, um, connection from the soil, the soil to a water tank, it's not going to the existing septic system.
Did you hear what he said? Or sorry, sorry. You gotta speak a little louder for me if you could.
It's the water softener.
The water softening system?
Yes, basically.
So it was backwashing into the septic system?
It's not.
It's not.
It's not?
Correct.
It never was?
Never was.
Okay.
So basically it was just, um, clarifying, um, any kind of concerns from, uh, from the board of health.
But quite frankly, that's not directly within our purview, but I, I'm, I'm sure you wanted to show that you guys were acting in good faith and correcting things.
Exactly, yes.
Okay, I get that. Um, so, I didn't mean to cut you short, but it's just, I don't wanna waste your time either.
I understand.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions of this gentleman?
Uh, yeah, my question, I mean, oh, uh, yeah, uh, so you submit, you must have submitted the, the building permit application to put the structure first, right?
Right, so that, uh, permit was issued December of 20, 2023, we have, um.
Do you have a copy of the plans that was submitted with that?
Uh, they were included in the port hole, but, um, so the, the, in the original permit.
Hold on, when you say plans, this is just basically a layout.
Um, there was a, um, a full set that was included.
I mean, what does it show on it, that's my, my concern, I mean.
It was, it was exactly the floor plan and it was, uh, um, the, exactly how the building will be looks.
Is that it?
No, it was much more, much more, because it was, uh, we, we also show how the building will be and like.
Did you show any plumbing fixtures on that? There was no plumbing fixtures, okay, I got you.
Basically, um, the drawing set was, uh, without, um, any plumbing and without a kitchenette, um, to comply with the requirements that is basically a, um, accessory building for office use with electrical.
Okay, so you submitted it in that fashion, but you haven't amended it with a kitchenette showing where the layout is going to be.
So th- this revised plan that actually shows that, um, the kitchenette, that's the one that I submitted, um.
Is that, that's.
Yeah, I don't see the kitchenette, do you see the kitchenette?
It's my, may, um.
It's light.
Toilet, I see a toilet.
Yes.
It didn't print, I think it must have been on a layer that was frozen or something. Uh, the one we have doesn't, doesn't have a.
You wanna take, you can come, you can approach, take a look at this plan.
Right, it's the same one, it's the same one that I have.
We, we don't.
Correct, I mean, it would have a, a toilet, a sink, and a.
But it doesn't show it, right?
I understand, yes.
Okay, good. Alright, so, look, we're not saying no, um, we're just saying not, not now, uh, just because of the fact that we'd like to have this, yeah, but that's the building permit, so when they submitted for the building permit, they didn't show any water-type connections because of the fact that they wanted to get the building, which, which we've, we've, we've granted them in situations like that, most of this is in the context of a pool house, many times, people, many times people wanna build a pool house, sometimes they wanna shower, they want an outdoor shower, they want an indoor shower, a toilet and a sink, and we've granted those.
Right, so in a similar fashion, this isn't, let's say for office use, he, somebody doesn't wanna have to.
And so you don't have to go back in the house or whatever?
Exactly.
I'm okay, I, that still doesn't, but I'm not comfortable when there's a restrictive covenant in place and I'm gonna be granting something that is contradictory to what that covenant imposes upon you, so I think, and we're willing to grant you some time, I think that you need to have a meeting with the bill, with the, uh, the board of health agent.
Correct.
To find out what he's gonna require you to do in order to relift that restrictive covenant, when he tells us that that restrictive covenant is going to be lifted or is lifted, then we would consider this application. We don't want you to file this all over again, because we understand there's a fee, there's time to this, and I'm sure your client would like to get this moving.
Yes.
We can give you another date, probably the last week of September, date, because we're already in the last week of August, we give you a full month to have an opportunity to speak to him, put things in motion that you would need, and if you don't have what you need in order to come before us on that date, you can also request the continuance just by written letter, you can do that, it may just require you to sign in acknowledging that you're granting a continue, that you want the continuance, because we don't wanna have a situation where it's allowed by statute, you understand what I'm saying, because we don't after in a certain amount of time with a yea or a nay, then it would be granted. Alright, so, uh, what's the last week of September?
And, and, on the new, if I may, Mr. Chair, when he comes back with the final plan, if he goes through the.
So if you get the approval from the, uh, the board of health, that they're going to lift the restrictive covenant, we'd ask that you put forth a more, uh, descriptive plan.
Sure.
A more detailed plan that would show us the sinks, the tor, so that, because that way, when we write the decision, we refer to either to the plan or to the specific number of, uh, fixtures.
Plumber fixtures, yes.
That's typically how we've done this for other, other applications.
I understand.
Thank you, Helene, for that. So given that this is a public hearing, uh, we always give people an opportunity, so if there's any.
give people an opportunity. So if there's anyone in the audience that would like would like to speak either in favor or in opposition to this request, we'd ask that you come forward. All right. So we have a gentleman here that would like to speak.
I have a question.
Sure. Come to the podium. Please identify yourself. Name and address, please.
James Phillips, two seventy nine Flag Swamp Road.
Where are you in relation to? Are you an immediate abutter?
I'm an abutter, yeah.
Okay.
I I just had questions about what this project is really all about. There's one unit. Do they expect someone to live in that unit at some point? It sounds like they do. And can we expect more units up in that area? So those are my two questions. I suppose I could talk to these gentlemen after you close the hearing, get an answer, but.
I'd rather do it now. So one of the specific conditions in granting this type of relief is that we can conduct, the zoning, the zoning enforcement officer can conduct a yearly inspection to confirm that this particular structure is not being utilized as a residential unit. And we specifically have a condition in the granting of this that it's not to be utilized as a residential unit. So it can be occupied if the gentleman's using it as maybe an office space for him to do his his work or whatever it may be that's in relation to whatever profession he might be in. That's okay. However, if he's utilizing it at any point in time, either himself, a family member, or an outsider as a residence, that's a no no. It's not allowed. And he can have the special permit revoked for the particular structure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to come forward and speak either in favor or in opposition? There being no one else, I think I got the representative would like to come before. Is there something else you'd like to add?
That's it. I was just, if there was any additional questions, I could.
So what is the, the last week of September, the twenty fifth? How's the twenty fifth work for you of September?
Yes.
It's good. How many cases do we have on for that day?
We have an admin appeal and two special permits for water.
Like this? Yeah.
Simple.
All right. So we only have three other matters. One's an administrative appeal and two other special permits for water hookup, similar to what you're requesting. But we need to see a pretty descriptive plan because one of the things we need to do as a board is collectively determine that it's not going to be utilized as a residential unit. So that's why we don't like plans that just have it very vague, so to speak.
Understood.
Because we refer in our decision to the plans and that we're going to require that you adhere to that moving forward. All right. So gentlemen, can I, I'll entertain a motion that we continue the matter.
September what?
Twenty fifth.
Twenty fifth. I make a motion that we continue this special permit to this, to the September twenty fifth, twenty twenty four.
C S B twenty four dash nine.
Yes, D S B twenty four dash nine, correct.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. See you next month.
Thank you.
And good luck. All right. So we don't have any other administrative matters that's on for this evening. And do we, is there anything else?
It's, we close the public hearing. We we close the.
Excuse me, the meeting's still on, sir. So gentlemen, are there any other issues that we need to discuss?
No, nothing, Mr. Chair.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.